Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. January 7th.
We should be out of the vote.
Yep. Let us know when it's...
Just waiting on two. It's unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Should we stand for the pledge?
Yep.
Hi. Do we have anybody from public input one? Anybody from public input one? Okay. I don't have any comments this week. We have a few items that I added for discussion later on in case we want to let administrators go home or those sorts of things. So those will show up later in the agenda. So now we can move into the action items. Can I get a motion to approve action item 5.1?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
The second was Susan.
No, it's Jordana's first. It's fine.
Jordana, second. Discussion?
I was just looking at emailed you about this, that just an explanation could be given because it was unclear because of the way this was done and I guess a new way in terms of through the cooperative agreement that I was led to believe that it wasn't being put out to bid and yet it was, but within the cooperative agreement. So I just thought it'd be helpful if Katie or somebody could just give a little overview. I mean, there's only the public but for people who watch the videos so they understand a little bit of the process and that this actually did go out to competitive bid but under a new process.
Dr. Kenter, you want to take that one?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you. So we, at the last board meeting, the board approved contract for us to do a shared services agreement with US Communities. And through that agreement, we secured with our architects a firm named Garland Corporation. And so Garland, working on behalf of our architects, brought three competitive roofing companies in. I personally went down to Stella Maris to oversee that. The three roofing companies arrived, walked the roof, and provided us with three written proposals for the work. And then we had Garland evaluate the three proposals and then bring that back to our architects. And it turned out that the firm that came in with the most qualitative work at the best price was Moore, who happens to be a roofing company that is also on other contracts but we have used in the past. And they're a local company and they employ local people. And our experience with them is that they do a really fine job. So that was the process. There was a bid through the architect and through Garland with the US Communities, shared services agreement.
I just wanted us to be clear so that you can understand that it did go out to competitive bid since it was a new process. And the only other question I had in the materials was that, and this could be I remembered wrong, but I thought that when the architecture firm came last time, I think it was IVI Group, that they said that this new material that they recommended was more affordable than what they had initially cost estimated. And yet I saw in the materials that that wasn't the case. I mean, it wasn't significantly higher. But I was just wondering if anybody else had remembered that or...
Yeah, so I actually went back to that slide when the architects presented that because I had that same question.
Yeah, I put...
And what they said was that because of the competitive landscape, we could afford better roofing material.
Okay, okay.
As a result, it's just slightly more expensive, but what we're getting is much better material. I think it's, I don't remember this off the top of my head, but I think it was kind of like, this won't need to be replaced for 20 years or it was the 10 or something like that, like.
What was the difference if it was more expensive?
It's in the contract.
I can actually answer that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think it was in the material.
Yeah, for the material, yeah, right.
Yeah, I think...
So we were originally looking at what's called an EPDM roof. And so that roof blocks water, it insulates heat, it doesn't require roof deck reinforcement. The roofing companies love working with the EPDM membranes because they're simple to install and repair. So that's, and they do last, typically the warranties on them are 25 to 30 years depending on the thickness of the membrane. So we were going to go with that, but then Garland had, with our architects, with the money, recommended we go with this modified bitumen roof, spelled B-I-T-U-M-E-N. And it's ease of installation, it's a superior substitute, built-up roofing structure, far superior than the EPDM roof. And it's, the big thing is that reputable roofers use that type of a roof because it resists heavy weather and heavy traffic. When our staff goes up on the roof to change filters or do routine snow removal or repairs, it will work better with the traffic on the roof. And it has a longer life with the one that we're looking to put on as compared to the EPDM. So it was recommended to us to go with this modified bitumen roof.
And what was the difference in cost?
I'm sorry?
The difference in cost was, just so that we're doing full disclosure.
I gotta, I gotta pull that. It was a slight difference.
Yeah, one of the other things that the architects said is that when New York State put out the RFP for the cooperative agreement, when they did that, they put a pricing schedule together to say you can't charge above this amount. And when Garland went out to get the bids, they came in under the scheduled amount. And so they, they used that delta to buy the higher quality materials.
And the difference between the two roofs for the better roof was $27,930.
Right. So it was a small fraction of the entire cost.
That's correct.
So just so people know that we're getting a much better roof for almost, for very little infinum.
That's exactly right.
And in this area, we are, we are threatened by weather. We are, by high wind events, by high water events. So I think it's a smart, sustainable investment for that issue.
Any other discussion?
Just one other quick question. They, it also allocated $35,000 for a field directive. Is that a person that is going to come monitor? Because I thought with us having a, you know, building and grounds person full-time, I was just a little unclear why that was needed.
They're, they're sending a roofing specialist out that, that's what he does, is oversees the installation of that type of a roof. Now, in addition to that, we will have our new plant facilities administrator and two of our maintenance mechanics there to oversee things. So we'll have our own staff, boots on the ground, on scene. But this is their individual, this is Garland's employee that will be there representing SAG Harbor to oversee the installation.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve action item 5.2?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I, I just had a question to email. I don't know if it's a question that has to be answered in executive session.
If you sent it today, I haven't had a chance to prepare.
Whether this individual had any relatives who are current staff or parents.
No, okay, all right.
No, no.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve action item 5.3?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? First was Alex, second was Susan.
Thank you.
Susan Schaefer.
Thank you.
I would like to thank this generous $500 donation which is going to go to Purchase Math and Science Supplies.
Yay!
Thank you so much.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve action item 5.4?
So moved. Second?
Did you get that?
No.
Susan LaMontaigne, Chris Teis.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
It's not popping up.
The vote's not coming up. Does anybody else have a separate?
I'm not getting it either.
Should we refresh?
I'm going to close it and open it again.
She's been asking.
She has been, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. There it is. Thank you.
Waiting on one.
Did you go?
Yeah, I'm waiting on it. Did it go in? Yours, Susan. She didn't.
Let's try it again.
Okay, now I got it. That's unanimous.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve action item 5.5?
So moved.
Chris Teis, second?
Second.
Jordana, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is another one. I had sent you a question today, but I'm sorry it was today. So I wonder if this is a question that has to be executive session?
It actually doesn't meet the criteria for executive session if you have a question that we can answer in generalities. We just can't discuss particular people.
It was a general question that's district-related, but I didn't want to reveal it. I was just wondering what, what it was that we were not able to provide. See if that's...
Can you answer in a very general, broad sense so we're not disclosing any information about students that might be pulled out?
The qualified teacher that was providing this service is currently on leave.
I see. So we had a particular staff person who is qualified in this area.
And trained.
That person is not available now.
That's correct.
I see, okay. Were we unable to secure somebody else in the district?
Some of, the other, and any other person who's, we don't have very few people certified. I think I only have documentation for one other certification of schedules.
So it's a temporary place.
It's temporary, limited, short-term.
Right, but it is expensive for six months. That's why I'm saying, that's why I think that's a relevant question. For that amount of money, we couldn't attract someone to come in for six months to provide the services. Is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, and in this particular program, the particular certification and training is held by every single staff member that would be interacting with the student.
Okay. That's helpful enough. Thank you.
But we're, our plan is to begin as soon as possible to broaden our scope because we're such a small school district that, that we, our plan is to broaden the scope of how many people can be trained so that we don't...
And create some redundancy, so maybe not this specific again.
Yeah, we're such a limited staff, but, but we're exactly that.
That's great to hear. Thank you. So then if we do get ramped up within the timeframe of this contract, or would we then bring the child back?
Training and certification is not going to happen in that window.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's long. It's kind of where some, it takes...
I was just curious.
Takes a longer...
Yeah, longer. And the child will actually be back before the school year's over, so.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Okay, there are five yes and one abstained. Alex, Alex abstained.
Thank you. All right, so now we'll move into items for discussion. I just wanted to let the public and the board be clear on the vacancy that we are filling. That was by January. So I, I just wanted to kind of walk everybody through the timeline. This will be available, so you've got video and all this kind of stuff, just as a reminder. On December 13th, January resigned effective immediately. So the very next board meeting was on December 17th. And that's when we had a discussion about what we wanted to do about that position. If you recall, we had three choices: leave it open, have a special election, or appoint somebody. So at that board meeting, we decided that we were going to appoint somebody. Also at that meeting, I asked that everybody kind of report to the district clerk and let us know what your availability is so that we could put together a timeline with the goal to have that appointment take place as soon as possible. We gave the deadline at the 21st. I pinged a few people on the 27th to, hey, remember you were going to give us the availability. We went ahead and put together that timeline and sent a blast out on the 2nd of January. So the...
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Was, were the members of the key communicators, the people that go to the communicators meeting, given that to send to their membership? If they haven't, can I request they do that? Because that will reach out to community members beyond the school family.
I think we sent that to the key communicator. If everybody got blasted, they, they're part of that email blast as well.
It should have been the group that was included in the discussion group.
And we are, and we're meeting...
Wednesday morning, but it's just a little bit later. It's due by Friday.
Yeah. You know what, I'll send a reminder email out to them asking if they'll sign to their membership.
Because it'd be nice to have some community members who maybe aren't parents step up. We used to have representation on the board of non-parents, which represents a sizable part of the community that doesn't seem to have a voice here. So at least to let them know that they're, they're invited to, to submit an application of interest would be great.
Well, I think it's smart to send out a reminder too, Katie. It's like what Stephanie said about tell everybody three times.
And also, you know, it's just after the holidays. You kind of, right just before the holidays, you lose people.
And we did recognize that it was short notice, but given the availability of our board members and the timeline, this was the best we could do. So today's the 7th. We're kind of walking through this process for the videotape, for the press, that sort of thing. There was a blast that went out last week. The reminder is that the deadline is the 11th. That will give us as trustees the weekend to look over things. We've gotten one applicant so far. I think other people have been saying things, but I, I haven't seen anything except for one, one person that's expressed interest. So hopefully that'll remind people that if they've, they've been thinking about it and talking to their family and friends and community members, that if they're interested, they need to email the Board of Education so, so that we have them down as a person of interest on record. We put in, let's see, we were already meeting on the 14th, correct? That was a regularly scheduled board meeting. So what we'll do is we'll start that meeting a little bit early. Depending on how many candidates we get, last time we had six or seven candidates and we managed to wrap it up in pretty short order. So my hope is that, you know, unless we've got 30 people, we could probably knock this out in one night. We did have enough board members express that they could come on the 15th if needed. My hope is we won't need that second night, but I just wanted to kind of put it as a placeholder on the off chance that we get 30 people coming out. I'm going to guess that even if we get 10 people, we could probably figure it out by the 14th. So the 15th is kind of penciled in, reserved, but hopefully we won't need it. The idea being that at the next board meeting, which is the 28th, we can swear in the person that we chose on the 14th and they will serve from May 28th, the night we swear them in, to May 21st, 2019. So as far as the swearing in and the dates and all that kind of stuff, I had several conversations with our school attorney as well, and he circled back to the NISFA attorney. And we just made sure that we were clear on all the possible scenarios. Well, what if this happens? And what if that happens? And who gets sworn in this night? Who gets sworn in that night? Right? So just to make sure that we all have clarity, as well as the people that are applying to be candidates, they kind of know what the expectation is. So whoever it is that we pick on that night is only entitled to hold that seat until the night of the vote. So if they can run again, they don't have to run again. That's, that's up to them. If they want to serve on the board after May 21st, they would have to run in the election. In that election, we will have three seats open. And depending on how many votes the different members get, depends on who serves the remainder of January's term, which is a year, versus a regular board seat, which is three years. So it got a little confusing and our school attorney and I sat down and like chopped it out on a board. And this is how it works. So hopefully we'll have multiple candidates vying for these positions. And the person who receives the highest votes and the second highest votes, those are the people that will get the longest terms, which are three years. So those people would be sworn in at the reorg meeting in July. We haven't set that date yet. And their term would expire June 30th of 2022. The person who receives the third highest votes would be sworn in the night of the election to finish out the rest of January's term, which is technically the shortest term. So they would get sworn in on May 21st. They would then serve for that extra six weeks, as well as the following year. Their term would end on 2020 and then they would have to rerun for that seat. So if, depending on people that are already serving on the board, either from the last election or from our board appointment, end up in these different spots, it, there's some interesting things that happened that I just want us to make sure that we are clear. So currently, the three seats that are up for election are the seat held by Chris Teis, Susan LaMontaigne, and January's old seat, which would be filled by Person X. Now, any of these theory people can run. These people don't have to run. It's up to them, right? But ultimately, where these sort out makes the difference. So if the current board members decide to run and they get the first and second votes, they continue in the seats that they filled to get sworn in. Like, nothing, nothing weird goes on. They just get sworn in in July. They serve until June 30th anyway. It's all good. If three new people that we don't even know get those three seats, again, it's all pretty much laid out that way. Where it gets a little weird is if the person we appoint ends up getting in the first or second spots. Because then they would not hold the seat from that vote until the reorg meeting. So they would, they would hold the seat until the night of the election and then they would be off the board for six weeks. And then they would get sworn in again for the three-year term. Because whoever the third highest vote getter is, is the one that gets sworn in that night. So if it's somebody new, then it, it's a little interesting. Likewise, if the third highest vote getter happens to be Chris or Susan, again, because they're holding seats already and they would get sworn in that night for the remainder of January's seat, they would need to resign their seat. So they would have to write a letter of resignation saying, I'm going to give up the last six weeks of my term so that I can serve this extra six weeks in a year. And then whoever the first or second would get sworn in, in July. So that, then that leaves an open seat.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
It's, it's what I've vetted with the attorneys for the last two weeks, so you're going to have to trust me on this one.
Thank you for doing this as well.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
I wanted to like map it out so that everybody was clear on how this works. So, and I'll, I'll forward you the, the correspondence from our attorney that helped me clear this all out. So what's going to have to happen is in this scenario, we would again have a vacancy for six weeks that we would have to fill. Now, at that juncture, we can do, again, whatever we want. We can leave it open for six weeks. We, we could hold a special election. Or we could just pick somebody to fill that empty seat. I, I don't think we need to make any decisions now because we, we don't know if Person X is going to run. We don't know if our current board member, we don't know anything. But you just need to be aware of how the scenarios might play out. We could choose to have the first highest vote getter fill that seat for six weeks. We could choose somebody random out of the community to fill that seat for six weeks.
You could also, you could also decide to have, I mean, I'm not suggesting I'm running, but Chris Teis or Susan LaMontaigne filled for six weeks if they were the one that got reelected. And they're off for six weeks. So they can actually get reappointed by the board. I've seen it happen in other boards.
To fill the empties? I'm confused. Help me out.
You know what, I don't think that we should talk about it because for that to happen, you know, we should all get our Lotto tickets. So it's kind of an unlikely scenario, so.
Oh, so like if one of you doesn't run to fill in that last seat? Is that what you're talking about?
No. If, 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 let's say I ran, and I'm not saying I'm running. Let's say if I ran and I got number three, so I would have to resign that night and I would get sworn in six weeks later. The board could say, we want her back on for that temporary six weeks.
That's what would happen. That's what we're saying.
Right. She, I think she's just making the point that the person that we, that the person we appoint could also be the person that had to resign. So we could just, it's more of a formality than a... So that we don't have to have a gap of six weeks of resigning and then we...
Oh, we could appoint Person X. Yes, absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
This is what doesn't make sense. And I, I don't know that Chris and I are even running. I don't think we are. But I have no plans to. But if, in other words, if we, whether we did or not, we're entitled to serve out our term through, through June. So that, that's why this doesn't seem to make sense.
So...
I think no one is a lawyer. It's made up.
I've done several rounds with multiple attorneys, but here, here's the thing in questions. Whoever is the third highest vote getter, whoever it is, is sworn in that night. So hypothetically speaking, if that's you...
But then that would be, but wouldn't that be for the temp, for January's seat? Correct.
Whoever gets number, the third number votes in May, gets sworn in that night and fills January's seat, which is from that night to the end of our term, and our term ends in June of 2020. So they serve for a little over a year. And it kicks off that night.
I think the concept is that, like, you guys can't hold two seats at once. So that's where, it's only in a situation where you're, you're reelected, but you're also the third vote getter, that you then are reelected as yourself, but you're also taking January's seat. And so there needs to be a mechanism in place to deal with that. And that's what, that's where the gap.
And, and that gap is what doesn't make sense though.
Our attorney gave us an entirely different answer.
Yeah, which doesn't make sense.
Because I was number three. I didn't have to resign. I stayed in my seat. And then just, you would, you would...
So finish your term. So I think I...
Why don't we, I mean, this is what we've been advised for now. If it comes up, we can always ask them to reaffirm.
Because it's completely different than the last advice we got from the same attorney. Yeah, it doesn't...
So the, the thing to keep in mind is when the term ends makes a big difference. So if the term, if her seat happened to end at 2020, it would have been a different...
I, I understand, but when it happened to me, it wasn't that case. So then I served a year and then I ran again and got the number one votes and served for three more years. So, so I'm just letting you know, under these exact circumstances, we had a very different direction and did a very different thing last time. So if, if this happens, and I'm, you know, I, I don't have any plans to run again, but I'm just saying, if it happens, then we'll just address it then. There's no reason to debate it now.
Right. And, and that was my only point, is that if this happens, we will need to address the six-week gap by appointing somebody.
Right.
Somebody.
Well, and we should note too, you know, East Hampton had a vacancy and somebody, unfortunately, worked ever, actually died in October. And they're leaving it open all the way until the election, which is the same time ours is, and much longer than what we're doing.
Yeah, that's an option.
You know.
That's true. We don't have to appoint anybody. That's true. We can leave the gap. So anyway, I just wanted to walk everybody through that.
Thank you.
Just to make sure that we were clear on that.
Can we just communicate to the public, at what point, you know, after we interview the candidates, the current board members will adjourn to exec session and have a discussion and make a selection? That will either happen on the night of the 14th or if we're not finished, on the night of the 15th. Is that correct?
Yes, a decision will be made either the night of the 14th or the latest of the 15th, but I'm betting on the 14th.
And then after that, we'll notify all applicants about what's going on.
Yep. The other thing that I wanted to fill in, thank you, Victoria. Anybody who wants to run in the election that is in May, they need to have 25 signatures to be on the petition and submit it to the district clerk by April 22nd to be placed on the ballot for the May 21st budget vote and election. So thank you for putting those facts in there for me, because I didn't have those details. Okay, so any questions about that per se? All right, the other two items related to this, I want to just go back to our scoreboard because we don't need to look at that anymore. I did want to look at the questions that we used last time at this point. Yep, have a break. Nice. Dr. Kenter, if you want to take off, you can. You don't have to stick around for this, but you're welcome to stick around for this. You don't have to stick around for this, but you're welcome to stick around for this. I did want to just, yeah?
We don't need Scott.
We don't need Scott.
Can you just show me what button to push?
No. I think, I'm not, I mean, to speak, I think we're both waiting to hear what your direction is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So let's do that first. Let's do that first. I'm going to, as those are passing down. When we were setting the agenda last week, we were thinking about the naming of Stella Maris and realized that after the EFPC presented to us, they said, you know, this is what the results of the survey were. You guys get to decide what you want to do. And we just kind of left it open. And the thought was, you can think about it. You can talk to your family and friends. You can see what you want to do. So before we let these guys go, I did want to just get some direction from the board. Do you want them to narrow down the choices based on the surveys and give us three to choose from? Do you want us as a board to make all of those? Like, how do you want to move forward with the naming of Stella Maris? Now that we've seen the survey results and the EFPC has reported to the board?
Ultimately, we're going, we have to make the decision, right? We're going to get a recommendation.
Or we can pick somebody to make the decision for us. But we have to decide what we're going to do.
Yeah, check it out, Mike.
Just speak for myself. I didn't expect to have an opinion on this at all. But, but one thing that struck me when we got that last presentation was the idea of having Sag Harbor in the name as, as there being some sort of marketing benefit to it. It just seems to me that if, if we're going to make this thing financially viable, the ability to rent out some of that space is going to be an important one. And if the thinking is that having Sag Harbor in the name is going to either make it easier to rent or get a higher dollar value, that, that would seem like a, a good idea to do.
Okay, other discussion?
Well, are we, are we discussing with the processes or what we think should be in the name right now?
Open for discussion.
If we're going to have a discussion about the name, that the boards can have an active discussion about the name and try to come to some agreement, then I would suggest that we get it on an agenda of a meeting that people, so that people know that we are having a discussion to make a decision. And because there may be people from the community that want to.
Is that what you want to do, is decide it at the board level?
I think, yeah, I think it should be a board level discussion.
Okay.
I do. I, I think we have a lot of good data from the survey. But I, I, I don't know if we want to have the committee give us two names or three names to pick from that we're, that we're necessarily married to. I think they, I think giving us the survey, I mean, they can give us recommendations. We can choose to use them or not use them. But I, I would hate to have them spend a lot of time if there's strong feelings, like Alex's suggestion of, let's include Sag Harbor. And if, let's say his idea was counter to the committee, I wouldn't want them to spend three, three more sessions coming up with the three perfect names that the board. So, you know, I, I think we should have a public discussion about it.
Okay.
And I agree with you, by the way.
Other discussion on the floor?
I think that yes, the public should be involved, especially that if we're going to name something that's going to be here for when we're not here anymore. So I think that's important, that they're involved in it. And we make the decision, you know, listen to them, so.
Okay. Other discussion?
I, I think in addition, it would be helpful to get a list of three recommendations from, from the committee. That way, we at least know the people who have actually been working on this for a long time. We know, you know, they've thought it through so that we actually can at least discuss something that's been vetted by people who have spent a lot of time on this.
Okay. Other discussion?
So I also had no strong opinions about this whatsoever and was curious what the survey data would come back with and what the committee would come back with. And I have to say, I was disappointed that I didn't think the survey data gave us any guidance. You know, it was clearly split three ways. And then a, you know, a whole other category, really four ways, because a, a lot of other suggestions that came under other, right? So that really didn't give us a clear direction, right? The committee then said, mentioned the Sag Harbor piece. But that's a given that it's in Sag Harbor. I know we had a past board member that, and the committee had also said, you know, if we're able to incorporate Sage, that that was nice. When I was listening to the committee talk, the committee representative talk, the name that surprised me, I hadn't heard before and I just really liked the sound of it and it was tight, was Sage Street School. You know, and I actually wrote down when he said it, I was like, oh, that's so nice. But anyway, so I just think it might be helpful. I agree with Chris to, maybe we need to have another discussion where the public understands that we're going to discuss this. But I don't know, well, it's, it's of course important to have the public input. We did the survey to get public input. There was no clear guidance. So, you know, I mean, maybe if we ask the committee, do they have some clear guidance? Maybe that will be helpful. But I just sort of thought Sage Street School just sounded nice and clean and is open. You had said to not have it be, because initially I thought, oh, you know, Sag Harbor's early learning center. But then you said that you didn't want it tied with a particular.
And for all those conspiracy theories out there that I've been reading about, we don't have any plans to change it at any time in the future. Because I did read that on Facebook. I was like, oh geez, that was not it. No, but 15 years from now, things could, all the schools could merge here on the East End. You never, you never know. You know, there's, there's those conversations out there.
Any other discussion? So I, I think that there, there is some science behind, you know, when you give people too many options, they get paralyzed. And I think that we've heard a little bit of feedback from the board about things that resonate with us. So with the board's permission, I'd like to ask the EFPC to come back with maybe three or four narrowed down. And then we'll have a public discussion where we can pick one of those or come up with something else. We'll have people weigh in. But at least to move the ball forward, let's, let's plate up three or four names that are palatable to the committee.
So our meeting is next Monday night at 4:30. I'm sorry, I just think, five o'clock here. And the board is always welcome to, to be there.
The, since we're asking them for some suggestions, we had some that felt strongly about Sage. I think the next category or related category was Stella Maris, right? You had, those are kind of the two big ones. And then the.
Sag Harbor. Sag, Sag Harbor and Sage and then Stella was, was slight.
So at least, you know, maybe if they're going to give us some suggestions, include at least the top two or something from the, just so that we have some comparisons versus three versions that sound so similar that it's like splitting hairs. Do you know what I mean? Because I think that might stimulate a, a more robust conversation.
Any other discussion? Any objection to giving the EFPC that direction to kind of come back with some suggestions? And we'll take it from there.
Just one other thing to ask them is, I, I agree that I found it interesting that the use of Sag Harbor as a marketing term could be helpful. Like, I'd like to know more about how that's, because I, it's also a given, like Susan said. So it's like, just would like, like if they could explain a little more about.
So where that comes from is Pearson? There's T-shirts that the Booster Club has made up. It said Pearson. It's a Sag Harbor thing. So I buy my children everything that has Sag Harbor or Pearson on it. And my son was rock climbing out in Seattle. And somebody said, "You're from Pearson?" He goes, "Well, my mom works there." He goes, "Oh," he goes, "I'm from Southold." You know, and they start talking and he goes, "But it's Pearson anyway." My son literally wears this paraphernalia. But he didn't know that Pearson was the name of the middle school, high school. Like, he was like, "Oh, but it's recognized on the East End very quickly." But if you go to Nassau County or anywhere in New York State, they don't know what Pearson is.
Versus Sag Harbor Elementary School. You know, it's Sag Harbor's elementary school.
Yeah, yeah. So when I initially got this appointment, the position, I wanted to look up our data. It was like, where is the middle school, high school? Because it's under Pearson. It's not under Sag Harbor. But a lot of people from bigger schools are used to going by their, their high school name. But because they're, the schools are so big, they immediately associate it. But Sag Harbor is a pretty cool place to be from. And so it's nice to link those two, but it's a very small place to be from, so.
So it's like East Hampton High, Southampton High.
Right.
Spring, Montauk, those are the names of the schools.
So are we supposed to be changing Pearson save?
No.
No, but I do.
That's just the point that he asked for.
I do say, you know, I do say it in a lot of our school sports now. It says Sag Harbor, Pearson of Sag Harbor Schools. So we do, are trying to link that a little bit more because, you know, we don't have, not everybody is, you know. I used to joke in the small town I moved to when I was 10 that I would never be a local because I didn't have three generations in the grade we are there. And they were like, "That's true. You will never be a local." So if you, you went, had five generations go to Pearson, you knew what Pearson was. But if you move here and somebody says, "Hey, I'm driving up to Pearson," you get a little blank stare. So, or if you weren't on the East End. So there is a linkage to what, what is Sag Harbor and that that's a Sag Harbor school.
Any other comments or direction for our EFPC?
I would just suggest we don't have it on next Monday's agenda.
No, we'll be busy.
Okay. Because we're busy and they may need more time because we need this room at six o'clock and your meeting at five. And you probably already have stuff on your agenda. So I'm just saying, maybe you give them a little time and then we give enough time.
We'll, we'll let them, let us know when they're ready.
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to stay if you want me to stay.
I think the other items are, I think I'll sleep. I have a couple other items for discussion.
Village and pound lot?
Uh, yeah, maybe I'll have you stay to that. And then we'll go over the new board member. So it came to my attention this weekend that on Tuesday, the village is going to vote on close to a million dollars to set aside part of the Long Pond Green Belt to pave it and put in an impound lot because of the parking issue in the village. I don't know all the details, I'll be honest with you. But there is a little bit of a time factor. And so this weekend, I was just thinking about that. And I was thinking about the broader issues of parking that we've kind of talked about at the board level a while. We put together a transportation committee. The transportation committee has been going through the recommendations of the consultant. That report is slated for a March presentation. One of the things that that committee was toying with is, you know, after that, maybe the board would want us to look at a Safe Roots to School grant, which allows us to pave more sidewalks and get more bike routes and kind of make the routes to school safer for other than cars, right? To kind of help alleviate some of the parking. So like, these are things that have kind of been on our radar for a while. I wondered if the board wanted to take a position with the village and say, hey, as, as a school, that is in the village, you know, do we think this is a good idea? Do we endorse this idea? Do we think that maybe there's another alternative that we could explore as, you know, the other big municipality that lives in the village? I just wanted to throw it out to the board. Because if this is something that we want to kind of take a position on, then as somebody on the transportation committee, which I've been serving on this year, I'd be happy to go to that meeting and just as a representative of the board and the transportation committee. You know, this is our position and this is what we're willing to do to help, you know, work with the village, just kind of move that ball forward a little bit. So I just kind of wanted to throw it out there because I don't know how any of you feel about it to see if, if, if that's something that you'd be interested in kind of taking a position on. Go ahead.
Can I just ask a point of information question? Before we get to that, did we close up the new board selection process piece? Because you had sent us earlier via email the questions. And I was wondering if we have any opportunity to make some suggestions?
We will. I just didn't, I, I figured that would take a while. And I, and if the doctor, Kenter, is on the transportation committee with me and, you know what I mean, so that I can let him go. So I just wanted to have that conversation.
I was just trying to follow along. Okay, great. Sorry. Yep.
Thank you, Scott. Yep. Appreciate it, Scott. So I just want to put the discussion out to the board and then we'll come back to these questions.
Great.
Go ahead.
I think it's a good idea. I'm glad you brought it up. It's very troubling to hear that they're going to, the plans to pave over environmentally sensitive area like that. And maybe we could look at asking them to even just put the decision on hold to give us an opportunity to speak with them about, we've got parking issues here at the school. There's parking issues in the village. Maybe we ought to talk about trying to work together. This isn't the first time that an issue has come up between the school and the village and parking. And so I, I personally would be in favor of us asking the village to at least put that decision on hold and, and give us a chance to talk about something that could both be a way for us to work together with the parking issue and try to, and to avoid what they're, what they're planning to do with, with the asphalt. There you go.
Excellent.
Can I just point a clar-?
Yeah.
What they're talking about doing is not related directly to parking at the school.
Correct.
Or parking our bus. Is there anything else, right? It's, it's not school-related?
Correct.
Okay.
I think there, it's indirectly related in just this one way that I can conceive of is, so I, I imagine this impound lot is if someone's parked illegally that they can tow it in the car. So, um, so me personally, as a parent of someone, and I drive my kids to school every day because otherwise my kids would be on the bus for an hour when we leave, live 1.1 miles away. Just parking to get to school in the morning can be a challenge, especially as soon as it's May. And as a result, I know a lot of parents that end up having to park illegally for 20 minutes to walk their kids up. And I know some of them get ticketed and that's, and I've noticed over the last two years, a lot of the parking spots we were using around Harbor Market and near the temple and stuff have been taken away, some of those parking spots. So it's even gotten worse because like there's more people here and the parking takes. So it is affecting in that way. Like, it's one thing to get a ticket. It's another thing to go drop your kid off at school and then the potential for them to be towed.
Well, I agree with you. I think parking around the school has been an issue over, over my eight and a half years on the school board. I've seen parking illegally within a five-block radius. So the village has taken back a lot of the spots and made them illegal. I think that, but that's, that's an issue that's related to the school district and related to being a parent here and trying to drive, transport your children and your family to school safely and be able to park. That's a school-related issue. What you're bringing up is not, I, I think it's a valiant issue. And it's an issue that maybe community groups get involved in. It's not directly related to the school. And I would be very uncomfortable having it be associated with a board committee. If you look at our two policies on board committees and their purpose and also the charter for the committee, for the facilities committee, which the transportation is a subset of, it is, it's not compatible with any of our policies in the district. Because it's not, you know, it's, it's not something that the school directs, controls or is related to being in the school. It's a community issue. But I think, but I think the issue you bring up about parking is one that I think would be great for the transportation committee to help tackle. Because that is directly related to our school families and the school experience. And it's one that continues to get worse. Now, we have, and this predates most of the board members that currently are serving, but the, we did have village officials sit at a table and we did have a workshop that included discussions about transportation. Remember that? You know, and maybe it's time to do that again. I don't know. But, so, you know, and they came and they gave explanations as to why. And there was a debate about it. And we also had some village officials here. So to your point about that, that might be something that directly relates.
Yeah. I was just making the next point, that it's like, you know, because of the shortage of parking, now, now they're at risk to be towed. Because if we didn't have any power before.
But where the story in the car is, whether they're just towing in a car, it's not, it's not, you know, it's not.
It's tangential.
It's tangential and it, it doesn't fit our charters at all or our, or our district policy.
Okay, other discussion?
Well, I mean, I, I think that's true. I mean, it's completely valid, but I'm also glad you brought it up. And I, though, my one hesitation when I read your email, um, OJ was, um, you know, the last thing we want to do is get into a feud with the village. We need to be working together. Um, but I also agree with Alex's point, um, uh, and, and actually all the other board members who have spoken. You know, this issue of the safe routes to schools and getting more kids to bike and walk, it's been, this has been something that everybody's talked about forever. Ask Ken Dorff. He's been working on it forever and nothing ever gets done. So maybe this impound lot issue is something that can be another impetus for us to sort of sit down with the village and look at this issue holistically. And while I recognize that this particular lot is not directly, but I feel, I feel like these issues generally of safe routes to school and transportation and sidewalks are a community general issue that is a school issue. So I, I guess that within that spirit, to say, hey, can we all sit down together and figure something out and maybe understand from their perspective what it is they're actually, what their needs are? Is there something that we could provide in terms of a need and then is there something that they could likewise be helpful to us back on whether it's the issue of some of the parking spots immediately around the school or also the sort of support in terms of sidewalk? So maybe we can all come together and create a solution that solves all the problems. So maybe if we look at, come at it from that spirit, recognizing that, Chris, you're absolutely right. I mean, it's not a direct, but I think that it's a community issue.
I think parking around the school is not where they tow and store their.
No, I recognize that, but what I'm saying is I think these transportation issues, these parking issues and these sidewalk safe routes to school issues are general community issues and the school's at the heart of it. And so we need to be working with the village and all I'm saying is maybe we can use this as an impetus to say, look, can, what, what is it that you're in need of? Can we all sit down and, and try to see if we can tackle something here?
Susan, well, one more, sorry, yeah, sure.
I think that the, I think that the transportation, as we all know, is an issue here. Will an impound lot, whether it's in the Long Pond Green Belt or out on Long Woff be the solution? I don't think so. So that's kind of, uh, I mean, where it goes, I don't know, I don't know if an impound lot, or what they're, what they're looking to do is the solution here to the transportation. So I would, um, I would think that we should address the transportation at, with them, as Susan was saying. But I'm not, I'll be honest, personally, I'm not for that impound lot in the Long Pond Green Belt. Because I'll be honest with you, that's my backyard. And I don't know if any of you have been there, but, um, it's beautiful back there. And to put a, a, a lot back there, why not put it over, say, on their property somewhere out in the open, like, what, they're putting it in a place that should be preserved. So re-group, stepping back, the impound lot, whether it, where it should be, um, I don't know if that's the solution and that's part of transportation as a whole. So I think that we should figure out what, 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 what do they feel this transport lot's gonna help? Right?
Um, just an example, um, where communities that are also congested have worked in cooperation with shared services with, between municipalities. Cooperstown has the baseball hall of fame and they're highly congested during the summertime. And this goes back probably 15 years ago. The village and the school district, which is about the same distance, worked out a, a parking situation because their lots were empty during the summer and they developed a trolley. And so they had free parking that was available and they gave incentives, all the baseball hall of fame gave incentives for folks to park at the school district. Now, I'm not saying that that's the perfect model, but if you sometimes can open those suggestions up and say, we have a school district that's willing to sit down at the table and come up with ideas, like you all are saying, is a few of our parking lots are not full during the summer. And, um, property is at a premium, parking lots are at a premium.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe they can see ways to maybe be less restrictive of us during when we are, parking is a premium for us, which is during the school year.
Yeah, and perhaps monetize our parking lots during the summer.
I didn't say it.
It's a great idea. And that makes it.
Have a little valet service.
Well, but that also makes it directly then related to our scope, right? Saying, hey, we have potential alternative.
Not about towing cars and stuff.
Well, no, but we have a potential alternative. Tow them, I'm just putting this out there.
Tow them and leave it at the school?
Tow them, well, allocate however many spots they need, allocate them in our parking lot. I'm just saying, this is actually then creates the situation where it's potentially within our purview to have a conversation, saying, why don't we explore this alternative instead where we get village money to utilize our parking lot for a certain number of spots over the summer, right, that they have control over if, if we find, as, after the transportation committee looks into it, we actually do in fact have the space to be able to offer that, but.
Or, and also just parking in general, so that, and they, if they run a little trolley or something, just again, then people can also park there and walk downtown, you know, and, and expand the footprint of what is Sag Harbor, which also engenders people wanting to put money into the sidewalks.
Right.
Okay, and there was one, oh, sorry.
I'll stop.
Oh, sorry. I just, I think it's related. I think Chris is right, it's not directly related. But this is a small community and we have a serious parking problem at the school and the village has a serious parking problem each time we do think, this would, is not the first time something's come up or where one party does something to address its parking problem and affects the other. The school has been affected by things that the village has done with regard to parking. I also think it's related in the sense that we have kids who walk outside and breathe and anytime you do something that has a negative impact on the environment here, it affects kids as well. But I don't even know that we need to get to that point. I think if we're, if the position is, we would just, as a school district would appreciate it if, if the village could postpone that decision to give us an opportunity to, to talk together about things that we could do globally to address the parking. Maybe it's some, maybe there's gonna be some great solution that's gonna also give them an alternative to the impound lot and have a revenue source for the school. I don't know. But, um, what, I don't see what the downside is in asking them to, to at least adjourn that decision and, and enter into a discussion with us about a, a global way to address the, our, our, the park problems that we both have.
Did you want to add on?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing that I would hope that as we all move forward with these discussions, that we keep sidewalks and bike routes just at absolute top center of this conversation. Because as Alex points out, you know, there's no question that, that the emissions from car traffic definitely affects children's health and there's all kinds of issues related to that. But there's also other things that the village has tried to tackle in terms of slowing down, um, speed limits and, you know, and trying to slow down traffic in certain roads. And a bike lane and better sidewalks, like particularly on the road, not this one right here. Uh, no, I think it's Sag Main, Bridge Sag, you know, the one, the one, one block over from the school. You know, there's a lot of families that live up on that road and they don't feel comfortable having their kids either walk or bike because there's no, there's no clear sidewalks connecting and there's no good safe bike lanes. If you have a little bike lane there and better sidewalks, that would actually slow down traffic, which is a good thing for everybody. It's a safety issue for the district. So anyway.
Anybody else want to add on to the discussion? Any other comments?
So, uh, it, right now, are they, they're scheduled to make it to, to vote on it tomorrow night?
I believe so. I could be wrong, but I believe so.
So then our step would be to request that they postpone it and have them, and have a discussion with us beforehand?
Right, right. And that's, that's basically what I'm hearing, is that, um, the least we can do is ask them to postpone the vote, um, come to the table, possibly kick it to the transportation committee as, um, they've done the work with the consultant, we're just waiting for a time to meet with the board. Um, and just like, let's explore. Like, maybe it's offering leasing up some spaces, maybe it's addressing some sidewalk. Like, let's look at this first before we move forward with spending close to a million dollars to pay Paradise and put in a parking lot, literally.
And we could use that night of the fifteenth, which we're pretty confident we're not gonna need for, for the 30 advocates for the board, as a potential meeting date.
So, um.
And, and if they don't postpone it, can we still, because this has come up, can we still consider asking the transportation committee when they're done with working on the busing data to, maybe the next step would be to really take another look at parking around the school? And then be a catalyst to tip those conversations?
So, are you guys okay with giving that directive to the transportation committee that now that they're done working with the consultant, that the next step is thinking about parking sidewalks, that sort of thing?
Right.
All agreement?
Yeah, yeah. And as part of that conversation, um, if it could also just be a conversation about, I don't know how we go about, but shoveling sidewalks leading up to the school is another, it's, it's a related issue.
Go say it again.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, I, I, I had a conversation last year with the mayor about that since I was the liaison. And, um, uh, you know, they, they either take it, th- th- they don't do it and they, they, the village won't do it. I mean, we can ask them to do it again, but they won't do it. So either they take it and enforce or they don't take it and enforce. That seems to be the trigger.
I know, I mean, last, last winter on one day, I, I know, because as I have to park further and further away from the school, one day my daughter got out, slipped on the ice, then literally we saw a friend, let's walk up together. A mom holding a three-year-old, sh- they fell together. I mean, it's, it's a real, it's a real problem.
Well, I think part of the issue is that, um, the, there's been a turnover in the village of who's living in the homes and a lot of people just don't live there.
Exactly, they're just not here and they're not here. And that's the problem. So it's just, they don't even know that.
Educate them, educating.
This, this last, um, the last, um, Western stuff exposes, it's 51% now are, uh, don't, don't live here now, so.
Oh, yeah.
In our village?
Vacant homes, that was the one.
Village or the school district?
School district, so.
It's, it's.
No, it's higher.
But it's got, I think it's got to be the minor.
In, in the village it's higher.
It's, it's higher, yeah, it'd be higher.
The village is higher. And, yeah.
Okay. Actually, can I ask a quick question related to that point of information? Um, if you're a declared vacant home, are you then paying much lower tax rate than if you're considered a home?
No, no.
So, let's.
No, your tax is the same regardless of how often or how in- infrequently you visit.
Okay. Um, anything else on transportation committee with the village? Okay, so I will move forward with that. Thank you. Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Um, alright, so then the last thing, um, I want to just go over the questions that we will be using, what, next week, right? No, week after next.
A week from tonight.
Week from tonight?
A week from tonight, yes.
Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Kenter.
Bye-bye.
Um, and then, um, we should probably also just briefly discuss the new board member orientation. Um, we had done a subcommittee to help align that and there's still a little bit of legwork to be done on that. So I just need some direction on the board on who does that legwork. So, um, did anybody have any feedback on the questions? I, I think these are the questions we used last time. I just, are they? I just cut them and pasted them.
Yep.
Um, any thoughts? I guess the first question is, do we want, uh, and this came up last time, do we want everybody to know these questions in advance? Or, I mean, now that it's the same questions as last year, they kind of do, like, do we want to just post them? I think there was some discussion back and forth. Chris had said, um, you get a more authentic response when they don't know what it is. And then Jordana kind of pressure tested that a little bit. So I just kind of, I think we should probably start with that. Go ahead.
I think we just give them out to everybody. I, I, I think you would learn more about seeing how much thought someone has given to the answer than, you know, just, just the way they think on their feet.
Thinking on their feet.
Because I don't know that thinking on your feet is such an important skill in being a board member, but I'd be more interested in seeing if, if these questions are at, in advance and one person is acting like they've never seen them before, whereas another person has, but not only read them but spent time thinking about that, that would tell me something. So I, I would be in favor of just giving them out.
Interesting. Other comments?
And then Meet the Candidates Night, they don't give the questions out ahead of time because they don't want their, their buddy who's been on the board for five years or someone else who's more involved in the school district to craft their response. So, um, so, you know, the Meet the Candidates Night, it is kind of spontaneous. Now, if you've been around the block, you can kind of figure out what, what are likely the questions. But, um, I, I, I still think if you give them ahead of time, they will sit down, they will sit down with their buddies or someone else and craft a little speech for each one. And it will not be as authentic. I mean, you know, any kind of, anytime you're interviewing political candidates for a position, they, they, you know, they're not giving the questions ahead of time if you're having a discussion like that, so.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I don't think we want canned answers. I mean, and, and I agree, I mean, maybe we could come up with a compromise where we post some points about the kinds of things we'll be asking so that they can give some thought and yet not post the specific questions even though they can dig up and look at the last time. Um, and I would just suggest that I thought last time, the only thing that I, I thought the whole process was great. I liked how quickly we did it and got a great candidate. I, I think the only thing that I felt like didn't work was that when we asked the question about how they would handle requests, because all it showed was who didn't have any sense of board training. Like, you know, there was a former board member who knew because she'd been through the training, other people who didn't, just, they didn't know because they hadn't been through the training. So I thought, I would strike that, I think.
Which one was that?
It's number four. Just because I just think it, you know, we ended up with a lot of people who sort of said a similar thing and it was just incorrect because they hadn't been through board training. And instead ask if they're, you know, willing to make sure they either take board training or do the webinar within a certain number of days, especially since it's a short-term thing, maybe within 30 days. And I think also, you know, there's been a lot of turnover on this board. I'm the third most senior person and I'm only in my first term. And I don't think that's healthy, actually. And so I wonder if we add a question, uh, if appointed, uh, will you run, you know, to stay in the seat? That's it. But that's whether or not you're appointed, will you consider to run for an open seat? I'm saying that if you are appointed, will you then run?
Right.
Although last time, everybody said.
I know, that's true. That's absolutely true.
Even if they don't get appointed, they're like, whatever. But if you get appointed, that's a good question.
Yeah, I think it's just a factor. It would be a factor for me, so I would just like to know. So that, th- those would be my only suggested, you know, whatever. I think it is a little different from.
I have questions about how it runs. Is it, these are the questions we know we're asking and then we also get to ask other questions afterwards or we, these are, this is it?
So last time, we crafted some questions, like everybody submitted questions and then I kind of, like, a lot of them were very similar. And so then I crafted these based on the feedback that I got from the board. And at that time, um, we, it was the first time we'd done it in a, this board ever, I think. And so the questions, the candidates didn't know them in, in advance. And so this round, was that on video? It had to have been, right?
I read that, yeah.
So, um, to the point of somebody's willing to go hunt down that video, I'm, I kind of.
It's not on our website, so they'd really have to do.
I'll, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm kind of with Alex on this one in the sense that I remember at Meet the Candidates Night, I was asked questions that I quite frankly had no clue because I hadn't been through the training. And it was literally open meetings law. They're like, how do you feel about it? I'm like, I don't know what it is. And so some of the questions, I agree, won't necessarily say if you're a good candidate or not because that doesn't, it's not required to be a good board member, right? So to be a good board member, part of it is doing your due diligence and doing your homework and reading things when you're supposed to and these sorts of things. And so I, I do kind of, I'm not worried about people cheating, like, you know, hey, what, what would you put for this? Because I want to look good for the board. That, to me, almost shows effort. And that might, that might tell me something if they actually tried. Go ahead.
I also think sitting on that side of the seat, you know, yes and no questions are, were, are, were, you should, if they are, please explain, you know?
Are you gonna run?
Nope. Nope. You have an agenda? No. You know, like, things like that. You know what I'm saying?
You know, I feel worded a lot from that.
Right, exactly. So a few of the questions, maybe we could reword them to please explain, you know? So that, that would be my only input, sitting on that side of the seat. That's all.
Excellent.
Well, we didn't get into any, you know, we didn't get into, into any issues. I think it was an attempt to be, um, non-partisan. I mean, we could be asking someone's position on school spending, on turf grass, on later start, on, you know, on the name of Stellamaris, I don't know. But, um, I, you know, I, I think for an appointment, my sense was people felt like not to do that. Although, you know, it's nice when, when the newspaper, you know, actually going back to that previous time, I had actually suggested that we have the newspaper come in and do the Meet the Candidates with the appointees. But that wasn't what we did.
And, and my other only thing would be, um, the same questions, depending on how many candidates there is. What about, you know, you get three questions, you get three different questions, or is that, was that too hard?
It, it was more to compare apples to apples, although the problem with everyone in the room is once someone answers it, if they have more experience.
Well, that was it.
I mean, we don't have, we have one candidate right now. But let's say we had three previous board members, the unexperienced community member hearing an answer from a board member, they'd be able to take it.
That, right. That, my only input would be if you had 12 questions and you, and you had, you had three questions, you had three other questions, you, that three, maybe you had three of the same, ju- you know, depending on how many candidates we get, you know? Because going down the line and listening, oh, yeah, that's what he said. Uh, no, no, what she said, you know? Not that it was bad, you know, but just, I don't know. I mean, it did work out well.
But that's why they rotated. And I think the issue, the concern there and it's, right? I mean, because it did get redundant was a fairness issue. But, you know.
We went, right, right. We could figure it out. But I think that it also pertains on how many candidates we have.
But, but look, I mean, but when we look a little closer at these, and then I'll let you answer it, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
A lot of them, the first one, granted, is board training question, right? The rest of them, do you have specific goals? Um, what experience do you have with this, that or the other?
Right, yes, yes.
It doesn't matter what, what she said because I've had different experiences and had different goals.
She said, yes. Yeah, I see, I see.
So I think some of those questions are just fine. I mean, actually, number one is the only one that might, that I might phone a friend.
And number four. Number, number one and number four is based on training.
We can change. But I agree, we can cancel four.
Yeah, I think we can cancel four. Um, so one, one question I would consider adding is, and I just, but I don't know how we get to this, because I, I want to be sensitive here, is your point that it would be nice to have a diverse representation, um, whether it be someone who doesn't have kids at the school, whether it be just a balance of people who have kids that are.
A student who's eighteen.
Yeah, just a balance of people with kids that, you know, that are younger versus older. Like, I, you know, I think we're fairly balanced right now, um, but we certainly don't have representation of a non. So, uh, but I don't know how we get at that rate. There, you can't ask someone, oh, are you a parent? Like, you know, there's, there's equal opportunity issues there, so.
They would know that anyway.
Why would we know that?
Well, because you, you know, it's a small town.
It's a small town.
I mean, I knew a person before.
I understand that, but that's, that's presuming you know it. That's not, I, I'm saying like, we should, like, if there's a way to aff. That's not, I'm saying, like, we should, like, if there's a way to affirmatively, I don't know how we do it, but I guess maybe the question is open-ended in saying, do you, you know, how, what special qualifications, skills, or, I don't want to say diversity, because it's not the right word. But, you know, are there, is there anything that you add?
And we don't want to discourage people who are applying who might be parents with kids in the elementary or high school. I mean, I think the more people we have, the better.
So, well, remember, you know what, I take it back. We did cover that because we asked them at the beginning to, remember, we gave them, because we gave them self-two-minute statements or something.
Right, right, to meet something, yes.
Yeah, and we talked about themselves. And so that's how it all came up.
And they, and they all identified themselves.
Yeah, they all identified themselves, whether they were, you know, they're kids. I have, you know, two kids, and this, whatever, you know, yeah. So, that, that came up in that.
And they can choose to share their work experience or how long they've been here, or.
And we asked for resumes, which I think we did again, right? Didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, I've jotted down the feedback you gave me on specific questions. I can retool these a little bit. I think I've gotten a good sense.
And we're taking four out, is that the will of the board?
Yep.
Yes. I don't think so, I crossed it off.
Yeah, correct.
And then, is the idea that, like, if there is a follow-on question, whether it be, please explain your answer, or not, are we okay to chime in after and ask?
We did it last time.
That's what I wanted.
But, that's a valid question.
Because I think it also gets at your desire to have them think on their feet as well, so that they could then.
Or just get something you know is on that.
Yeah.
Number one, do you guys want to leave that one on there?
I actually do, because, especially if we're giving it to them in advance, they should, they should be.
Well, I have, I'm still unclear on whether we're giving them this in advance.
I, I, the reason why I think it should be on there is because, it's like, would you go for a job interview without having any knowledge or doing any research about what the job is? If somebody comes here and has not Googled job of a Board of Ed member in New York today, because trust me, fifteen articles come up within thirty-five seconds on Google. If they haven't done that, I don't care about board training or not. If it's something generic they read off of NISBA's, at least they showed that they just didn't show up. So, I would, that, that's not, you don't have to go to training to know that, that's not a nuance. That's, that's very accessible information.
What are we giving the questions out?
I, I think that I'm, I'm not hearing strong feelings that we should provide them in advance. I'm hearing, let's not provide them, but then at the same time, we're not changing them from last year, so if they want to go figure it out, they can, but at the same time, we're not going to be like, these are the questions we're going to ask you.
But Susan did say, I said, I said, why don't we do a compromise? Where we do a couple that we give them, and why don't we do it where they are things like number one and number four, which we just took out, in other words, that would, they would have had to do research, and we can see then if they have done their research. What about something like that? So what about we give them three that, hey, we're going to be asking you these, and we're going to be asking you other questions? So then we've covered that, and we've covered, you know?
You could do that, or you could give them something general, like, we're going to ask you questions about your experience and how it relates to being a board member and your thoughts about being a board member, what you bring to the table. Because really, that's what, these are all kind of nuanced.
But then we can also say, and we're going to ask a couple of questions about, you know, board procedure, might be helpful to, you know, familiarize yourself with that or something. But I'd be all for giving them a couple of procedural questions.
Are you guys comfortable with Susan's suggestion?
I like Susan's idea.
So, what I'm hearing is that when we receive these applications and we let them know this is the date, yada, 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 like, I'm going to send out something that says, thank you, this is the date, this is the time, this is what we're planning, please prepare in advance a two-minute spiel about yourself and why you're compelled to join us and yada, 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 and be prepared to answer questions about.
And I think it's questions one through three. Those are, those lend themselves to preparing ahead of time.
Well, so I was thinking, one, four, Katie just recommended something about open meeting law, which is the one that I literally knew nothing about, which you would actually have to know.
You have to know it.
Right? And then, the rest of them, we ask them when they come, and then, because they're all kind of, the other ones are personal, right? Like, I've got my own reasons, my own goals.
Yeah, I love that.
Comfortable?
Yes.
Alright, so I will work on that. I'm not going to be able to get to it for a day or so, but I will send out the draft to the board, and then again, if you guys have any feedback, you know, typos, anything, sensitivity.
Seven, there is a typo.
Correct, yeah, right, that's the stuff we're going to be looking forward to. Did you want to add on, Victoria?
Well, just keeping in mind that they have seven days before they're here.
Right.
Yep.
So, they'll have, I mean, and ultimately, we don't want to parade a dissertation, a two-minute spiel. These are the three things we're going to ask you about, come in at six o'clock on Monday.
I'm sorry, you're saying seven days, but if someone submits their application Friday, they're coming three days later, right?
Well, then that's their silliness, and they should, if they really want to do it, then put their application in.
And they're waiting.
And they'll be prepared.
There you go. So, the sooner you put in your application, the sooner you're going to get the.
Don't be silly.
I don't know about that. These all might be going out on Friday, I don't know when I'm going to be able to get to this. Was that it? Is that all I have on my?
That's our orientation.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Good team. So, we have an outline for how to orient new board members. Some of that is just providing basic information, right? So, a lot of it was demographic information, some of it was like how to be a better board member type documents that are available. But, to kind of implement this, I feel like all that information, some of it is like sitting down with board presidents, stuff like that, and that's fine. But some of it is, all that information should live somewhere so that they don't have to go find it, or, you know, it, it used to be a binder, right? But in the digital age, it should be like a folder in, in Board Docs or something like that, where they can just peruse it as they prepare. So, the only reason I needed the will of the board is to physically gather all this document. Will take time, which, will take hours, which will take money, and we need somebody to do that. And so I just need the will of the board as whose job does that, do we want that to be? Katie had said if we want to ask a couple of secretaries to take a little bit of overtime, they'd be happy to do that. I think you've had some people loading stuff to Board Docs anyway, so we could hand this list to a couple of secretaries and get them to knock it out. But again, that requires dollars, which is why I'm coming to the board. Thoughts?
I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't, I, I think it's, it's a couple of hours, it's not like twenty hours, because most of the stuff is just easy links. So, if it's, you know.
And that big old book full of that bag is in the closet, is it somewhere? Am I right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not useful to get a big binder.
Right, right.
It really is.
It's not.
Particularly because stuff gets updated and what you have is archaic and collecting dust.
So, I'm in agreement, yes.
Some of the stuff like policies, they're already on Board Docs.
Yeah.
And then, if you look like C and D, well, you know, the policies are, but D, I already have loaded on the library for you guys, all of those, surviving your first year, and, you know, you've got four or five listed here. I've got about seven of them, there's two extra ones on here. And a couple of them are books, so.
So, you know what would actually be helpful, I think, is also in that outline, having it next to it. Just say where it is.
Or link to it.
Well, that's what somebody has to go through all of this, to see where all of that is located.
Right, no, right, but I was saying is so that, you know, under policies section or under this or that, because you can't always, you can't easily link to a document in Google Docs from a, from a webpage. You have to go to Google, Google Docs first and then do it from, when you search our website, you don't get stuff in Google Docs. So, I'm just saying that to have, to even on the sheet, just say where stuff is as a reference would be helpful.
Right, can I just, while you are all here, if you go to your library on Board Docs?
I see it.
You'll see orientation, I hope you'll see it.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you click on that.
Wait, general events, I don't have that.
In the agenda for today, right?
So, on the left, you click on library and then look at that.
No, in the library in general.
On the top, this is library on the top, all the to the right.
Yep. Just because I'm not sure what you see.
I don't see anything in there right now.
Oh, hey, go, go.
Yeah.
Oh, you, oh, you got it, yeah.
I click on it, but it doesn't seem to be anywhere.
General, and then there's orientation.
Right, you got it.
New board member orientation.
So, if you go.
But here, there's nothing here, though, but there's nothing there. There's nothing there.
Can you click on it?
Yeah.
Oh, why don't you have it? She's gone. You have it, right? You can open it, it's there.
Yeah, there's nothing underneath new board member orientation.
Alright, so you guys can open it. So, like, if you, I'll have to find out when to get this to you.
Oh, so she has all these documents underneath here.
It's under executive, where you guys should be able to see it.
We, we should be, we should have probably rights or something like that.
I don't know, I've got to change your rights. It says here that executive content, which is you guys. Alright.
Maybe our accounts aren't linked to.
So, so you know this is all here.
Isn't this somebody's job anyway? Isn't this part of either Victoria's job originally, to get, to get this stuff all?
No, we created this as a board because we wanted it. This is our job. So, if we're not going to physically do it, we need to pay somebody else to do it.
Okay, because I, I just, when we, when we voted to go to Board Docs, then I, I thought it was just going to be easier for things to transition over, so.
Right, but it's, it's, this is ours. This doesn't, this isn't the districts. This is for our new board members. This is what our subcommittee decided that we need to, like, this is, we own this. This is all us. So unless we're going to physically do it, we need to pay somebody to do it, which is fine. We could even ask Victoria to do it, but that, again, requires something that's, this is our job, so we need, if we're going to delegate it, which is fine, then we just.
Right, but doesn't the district clerk work for the board?
She does.
Oh, okay. And in many districts, the district, part of the district clerk's job description is to update and maintain orientation materials. I thought it was, it was that way before in this district? So, I would have assumed that it would have continued to be that way.
When I got here, we had nothing.
That's why we put the committee together.
We had nothing. And we've had twelve board members in five years.
No, I don't do it.
We've spent zero orientation.
Which I would spend ridiculous, but when I started, the district clerk pulled together orientation material for the new board members.
Carl had put something together?
No, I'm not, not Carl. I, I started years before Carl.
Oh, okay.
And, and the district clerk, for years, put together orientation material. And, and, and the board may have directed what it was, but the district clerk did, and in many other districts, it's part of that job description. So, maybe we need to reflect on that.
Can I, can I just say, C and D seem to be the historic type of things? Not all of C, but all of D?
We don't have the list in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, we've.
So, for example.
It's in your discussion?
It's on your Board Docs link.
So, for example, Jennifer and I developed a five-year fiscal plan. We developed a five, this was the charge of the board. So, somebody could come get that, they're going to have to scan that, they're going to have to develop that, they're going to have to put that in. Those are not small documents. Our building condition survey actually has pictures that go along with it. So, every year since I came here, we, we went to Western Suffolk Bosse's and had them do in-depth survey population reports on us because our survey, our, our population is shifting. So those were all things that have been added since then, but it's a little bit of a scavenger hunt, but it's important. I don't know if that got missed, but so, the things that are on here, we've, we've done a tremendous amount of work in five years that has expanded. I don't think it's going to take long.
Can I just make one, I, I know that, you know, there was a committee of you guys that did this, and it's very exhaustive and great work. I also just wonder if it is so exhaustive that it's going to be a little too overwhelming for a new board member. And I mean, I remember when I got my packet, the binder they handed me was this thick. It was like, oh my god. So, you know, I wonder if, at least in this new orientation stuff, yes, links to where they can find some of these things that Katie's referring to, but the initial thing being the how to be a good board member, some of it just straightforward, so it just doesn't seem quite so overwhelming right away.
So, sort of phase one, two, three, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know what I mean? Like, just like, what are the initial things? Because I, I just think the whole, you know, the five-year financial forecast, that's, that's a little much, right? Can we all agree on that?
I agree. I didn't, I mean, as the newest board member, you, you know, you guys put this together, but nothing was available to me, is there?
Yeah, it's not, it's not in ours either.
The most important thing I, I want to be able to get to speed is the policy manual to be updated, right? Because that's where we think so this thing, and that's, as, I need to know where, so, to me, that would be the priority, and it's a different, it's a different question. And I think I agree that this is, I mean, maybe this is a list not of what you need to be oriented, but kind of, this is almost, we, we frame this as a, these are things to be on your radar as things that you might need to know about at some point, and here's your assigned board member, older buddy, or something, that is seasoned, that can help guide your questions, can be the point person for questions, maybe that.
But the How to Be an Effective Board Member book is actually really well-done, and it covers a lot of the rules stuff, and so that, I think, is a must-read for any new board member. Because that, that actually, and when you go to the training, most of that is already covered in that document.
I think for me, it was more like, who is the appropriate person to ask, right? Should I be asking Victoria this question? Should I, was, should I be asking January this question as a president or as my friend? I, I wasn't sure who the right person was to ask questions. That.
Right, the kind of logistical piece.
Yeah.
But, but just to, just to build on what Susan said, is that we have many people who become board members who's never been to a board meeting. Who don't know what, the role of a board member, don't know any of that stuff. And if they don't read the, you know, How to Be an Effective Board Member, they're coming in to participate in a, you know, in, in an organization that they know nothing about their role. So, so I think that's really important. A lot of this came off of an outline from NISBA. But I do think that it needs to be phased, and they talk about that. The other thing, which they do in some districts, is they have another board member be a mentor. So there may be some initial stuff, but then they may have one or two meetings with someone who's more seasoned, who can say, hey, you know, I'll just walk you through, you know, some additional. So it's not, there's not like a data dump in the beginning.
So, do you feel like this needs some tweaking? As far as like maybe implementing phases or prioritizing what information would be?
Well, the question becomes, what, what is on this list that a board member shouldn't know in the first few months where they may be at three or four meetings? Is there stuff on here that they don't need to know to operate effectively?
Well.
I think that, that's kind of the question, because if there are, then maybe that becomes phase two or three.
Right, and that's what I'm, yeah, did you, the number of square miles in the district?
Yeah.
Right, so, I, and I, so if, if the committee that worked, I know January was on that committee, maybe somebody else can join that committee, wants to maybe prioritize, but then, you know, at least we have, I, I think I'm hearing the will of the board that we can ask either Victoria or a secretary to start populating some of these in an, in an organized way. I just wanted the board to acknowledge that that's man-hours, right?
Do we have an extra?
And I, I don't have the authority to do that, right?
Do we have extra copies of that, Dr.?
It's attached on your, on the agenda.
Maybe the direction is that we're asking someone to populate the stuff that's easy to get there and the stuff that's not, or that they think is worded in a way that doesn't really make sense, to just note that, and that way we know how to edit the orientation.
Yeah, and, and I think part of it too is that you don't want someone to be on the board for a year
and have no idea that there was access to information that they should have had access, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So part of it is just, is just getting it on their radar. So, for example, I didn't know until several years into my tenure that for no cost, you can go to NISBA's website, and there are webinars on almost any subject about being an effective board member, or the content we address. I didn't know that, and, and, um, you know, so just knowing kind of what those resources are, I, I think is, is important if someone really wants to get to speed.
So, so would you be willing to maybe sit down with the subcommittee and just like prioritize?
Yeah, Susan?
Now, anybody else want to, Jordana, you're the most recent, do you want to kind of put your two cents in as far as like...
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I, I, what would be helpful for me is to like sit down with someone like Chris and be like, these are all the things I still don't know, could you, could you help? And do you think it's important to know, and do you know where it is? And if we don't, then...
Actually, I agree about the square miles, I mean, I couldn't tell you how many square miles there are, and how relevant is that? That was on the NISBA list, so I think there are some that maybe could come off because of that. In some districts, I guess that's more important.
And there was like the top five NISBA webinars that they recommend you watch.
Yeah.
And one was open meeting laws, like, you know, who to go to, like, like the common question, how to answer the common questions. The one that's really good is like, if you're, so a parent comes up to you, what do you do? And they do a nice simulation of, of like how to, how to be a good board member is send the parent to the teacher. If that doesn't work, go to the principal, you know, and, and some of those are really good.
So, so let's do this, Chris, since you're the most senior board member, um, and our two most youngest board members from that standpoint, at least, I don't even, how, how do you say it? I don't even know how to say it. Um, would you mind dry-running them through this process and just kind of helping, like, wrap their heads around, what on here do they still not know, right? Um, just so that we can kind of get this nailed down to know what our priorities are, what's nice to know, what's need to know, what's like, and I agree, how to be a better board member and surviving your first year, and some of that, that stuff was really, really good. Um, and then, once that gets kind of retooled a little bit, we'll pitch it to Victoria to find out, like, what are our priorities as far as putting together a Board Doc's? Because we'll have, because I don't want to send her running to start putting the stuff together if we decide that some things are more important than others, and therefore should just simply be higher on the list. Because it's going to be human nature to start at the top and work your way down.
Right, and, and, and what I was going to say to that, right to that point, is I, personally, I think, and from my experience, that the items that are at the bottom are actually the things that should be at the top.
Yes, C and D are...
And that's, in the orientation folder, it should be, you know, how to be a better board member, you know, surviving your first year, I think seven signs of effective school board is redundant, actually. It's all in how to be a better board member anyway. So do you know what I mean, it's like, not all of that is needed.
So let's put them in order of importance, and then kick them to Victoria.
And there are a couple of things I would add to them as well.
Could you email me that?
Sure.
That would be great.
Awesome, thank you.
But because that, that general stuff's important, but you also don't want a board member serving for six months who don't know what the district goals are for the year.
Right.
Right, because then how do they help prioritize focus and work?
Exactly.
But also, going forward, unfortunately, we can go backward, but going forward with Board Docs, a lot of these things will be, you know, on Board Docs.
Right.
Which will be good. And a lot of these things that I'm looking at are on the website, so...
So if we can, if we can find a place where, it's almost like a home, home base?
Yeah.
Right? Because we don't, and we'll let you logistically figure out how to...
If you want me to sit down with you...
Sure.
I will do that, while you're hashing it out.
That's good.
Awesome, thanks, guys, appreciate that. Um, anything else, uh, for discussion?
Are you asking about new items for discussion that we'd like to suggest?
Um...
Or are you asking just under the items for, any discussion for the items that were under discussion on the agenda?
Do you have something else that you want to bring to the table?
Yeah, I had emailed, uh, I had raised it at the last meeting about the greening of the school district, and you had said, oh, well, let's bump it back to the wellness committee, but I just wanted to revisit it because I think what, um, I don't know if you misunderstood what I was trying to say, so I just wanted to bring it back up. Um, for many years, the, the board and the community have talked about the greening of the school district, and some of the points of that were incorporated into the wellness, the new wellness policy, right?
Mm-hmm.
You and I have to write that. Um, and part of that was about reducing exposures to chemicals, to plastics, whatever. But I don't think we've been implementing some of those items in the way that we should, and so I, rather than bumping it back to the wellness committee again, where it's just another conversation that comes back to us, I would really, there are just some simple things that we can do if we say as a board, look, we should be doing this as a school district, it's in keeping with the new updated wellness policy, and it would be a great way to set an example. And the things that have come up before are getting rid of identifying and getting rid of anything item, um, that's, single-use plastic where there is an alternative. Um, so, uh, for example, plastic water bottles, why are we selling them? You know, we, this kind of thing.
So, this sounds like a, a larger discussion, and a lot of those things were already talked about at the committee level as far as when we put that policy together. And I do think there is an issue with how that policy is being implemented, boots on the ground, right? Because we created policy, and that's our job, but then ultimately, the enforcement of policy is another layer, which isn't necessarily our job.
Right, that's in the ministry.
Right, so, but one of the things that is in the policy is that there are people in place, in different places, that, um, act almost, I can't remember the phrase, because it's been a couple of years since I've read it, but almost like liaisons about making sure that the policy is being implemented in spirit and in kind. And there's green things that are not happening, there's dietary things that are not, like, there's things in the policy that are not happening, so part of the wellness committee is making sure that the people that are boots on the ground are reporting back about what's actually happening in the buildings. And so if there is something like, we want to make a blanket ban of some sort, then we would need to get that recommendation from the wellness committee, right?
Okay, because in addition to that, for example, at the last homecoming, uh, you know, we had the food trucks, which is great, and the food was great, but, uh, one of those food trucks used styrofoam containers, which as a, you know, I think an environmentally aware community, that is an absolute no. And we, as a school, very simply can say to any vendor that comes in, you cannot be using styrofoam on our campus, you have to find an alternative. Um, you know, paper is preferred, or aluminum, but get away from the plastic, get away from straws, plastic straws. Bay Street is about to make a big announcement on what they're going to be doing in terms of getting, eliminating plastic on February first. So I would just love to see the school be more true to the spirit of what was in that policy, and so I, I thought there might be something we had to do at the board level, but, it's because, like, just ensuring that vendors are following the spirit of our policy is a simple thing, it seems to me.
But does it, would the next step be to have a report back on what we, how we are currently complying and not complying, and then recommendations on how we get into better compliance? To me, that kind of that auditing process?
Right.
I'd like to hear that versus be responsible for, we can, we can track that down.
Right, thank you, yeah. So, and, and so we did make the switch to put you on the wellness committee.
Okay, okay, great.
And so I, I would recommend that, I mean, that is the job, so wellness is one of those committees that is required by law.
Okay.
And part of their role is to make sure the wellness policy is being implemented true to form. So that's part of that job, the committee's job. So if, if we need to make further board action, we would need to get that recommendation from them.
Okay, so that, I, I didn't realize that, so that's great, and then I can, if you want, I can spearhead that through there, because that's something that I would definitely, when I'm off the board, would love to stay on anyway, if you'd like.
Love it, love it, great. Love it, love it, love it, awesome. Anything else for items for discussion?
Kind of positive note on that wellness thing, the spoons we've gone to now are made from...
Are edible?
Yeah, but they're made from organic material, they're the weirdest thing I've ever touched in my life.
Are they made from rice, are they just made from rice?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, they're cool.
They're the weirdest things.
The spoons?
Yeah, the spoons.
Yeah, it's good, they're totally edible.
All right, any other items for discussion? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Hold on, public input two?
Oh, sorry, public input two, thank you. My computer fell asleep, I got all excited. Public input two, you want to come up? Come on up! So we're still videotaping, you're still on camera, um, state your name. We just ask that you don't, um, mention names of employees, students, things like that.
Um, my name is Sharon Bado. I was here on September thirtieth, questioning transportation to children, uh, busing for children that do not attend, um, the public schools, and somebody was going to get back to me, and I hadn't heard anything. Okay?
That's, oh, that's my bad.
Secondly, I know that transportation is coming up at your February meeting. I have a cost analysis from New York State, and I'm wondering if the transportation committee would be able to fill out prior to that meeting, so I can review it, um, and some information about your RFPs and how you bid outside the district. As a taxpayer, I believe every Sag Harbor bus student should be on a Sag Harbor bus. That's why we have buses for the district. The district now is moving out into the community, some of our buses are otherwise occupied. We have to farm out or charter out other bus companies for our students in Sag Harbor. I don't understand that. So, comparing apples to apples, line for line cost, I have a cost analysis, and I just like some idea of how the transportation is working. Are we in the business of education, or are we in the business of transportation?
Thank you.
The end.
Thank you. Um, and because we're here, I'll, I'll address it. Um, we did, it did come up to the board level.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we looked at the information, and we did not make a decision. So, um, the transportation committee, um, has been digging a little deeper into the busing situation. Um, and so when we, when the committee reports to the board, we'll make sure it's on the agenda, and you might get some clarity around those busing issues. I don't want to speak out of turn, because if I get my facts wrong...
I understand.
Um, but I think we'll have more clarity on that, I think, um, but I think it is prudent for us to come back as a board and revisit, um, the request, because, like the Stella Maris, we were like, oh, let's digest this for a minute, and then we never got the will of the board as to what exactly we wanted to do about it. So, um, what I'll do is we will, um, find a night where we can, um, put that on the agenda. Um, just to, we can even just put it as an item for discussion to decide, do we want to change our current policy? If you guys recall, um, we are not required by law to provide busing for private schools, um, but we've heard from community members that, um, those parents are, are put in a little bit of a position when our schools closed, and then they have to figure out how to get their kids back and forth.
And we got some of the cost info.
And we have the cost info, right? So we have everything we need.
I can share that with Sharon.
Yeah.
Can I, can I then give you the cost analysis sheet, so you can take a look at what it is I'm looking for?
Yep, yep, awesome.
I have it.
All right, so I'll put that on agenda, so you guys can, um, think about that, um, so that we can just get the will of the board on what direction we want to do, so we can put that to bed either way.
And, um, just point of information, um, were, were you aware that you can speak to any issue at public input one?
Well, I, going through your agenda, having printed everything out, I kind of wanted to wait until everybody finished everything that was on your agenda, as this was kind of like old business, you know, from September, so... I didn't know, I had to do it right away.
You don't have to, you do, you don't have to...
You just, you know, I want to be here, I want to...
Yeah, you didn't have to do it, I just want, I just wonder if, because it's a new policy, it seems to me, based on what I've seen also online, is that people still aren't necessarily clear that they can speak to any topic at public input one, so maybe we can just reinforce that for a while longer, until people realize that they can. So in other, in other words, you didn't have to stay for the whole meeting if you didn't want to.
No, I wanted to, but that's okay.
You could have raised this, which is great, we love that, but I wanted you to know that you could have done this at either point.
No, but it's okay.
Not having been involved for many years because I didn't live here, to become familiar with your board, to see the way you interact, to listen to your issues, is very important to me for what I want to address in public input. So, you know, I plan to be here at every meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I'll recruit some more people.
Anybody else for public input two? All right, thank you, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In unison!
Second, I'll second.
Chris is first, Susan, Ellen is second, um, all those in favor?